Hey. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axon County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, October tenth. Like to call the meeting to order and welcome Mr. Formode to handle our invocation this morning, so.
I feel I should say as I go to read my invocation and prayer, I use third person pronouns, us, our, we. Uh, I am an elected school board official, so the we, I've worked here in the county in the elections. At a poll and in another state in another decade, I was part of city government, so I, I feel very connected.
Awesome.
As public servants being agents of the Lord God, we govern to, to govern, we should always be concerned about the content of our words. In the nineteenth Psalm, the perfection of God's law is declared. The Psalm ends with these words, "Let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, my rock and my redeemer." Now let us pray. Father, thank you for the perfection of your word and your law. Thank you for establishing our time and our place. I pray for these commissioners and the employee of the accounting that the clarity of your thinking will guide their minds. May your rules and the judgments of these commissioners be true and as right as your law is. Father, we know our weaknesses as human leaders. Like the Psalmist also said, "Who can discern his errors? Declare me innocent from hidden faults. Keep back your servant from presumptuous sins." I pray that you will lead so that the deliberate bad choices are not made. We know that you alone can truly see the future. As these commissioners seek to manage our county's environment or navigation systems, our logistical structure, may they be blessed with your wisdom to protect our future as wisely as possible. Father, your precepts are right, your commandments are true. May they fill our minds daily. In the name of the Lord Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey.
Thank you.
Public comment.
I'd like to make a comment, something that's on the agenda. Uh, while back I had a long discussion with Mike Slattery about his involvement on the committee to name roads and streets in Axon County back in the nineteen nineties. And he said he was there because he was really concerned about the confusion that E- EMT drivers had about finding Ray wallets one time. They went looking, they were supposed to be looking for Raymond wallets and they went looking for Rayfield wallets that had no address. And Raymond wallets died while they were looking for Rayfield. Well, I'm concerned about where things are. Uh, my house number is one one nine four six State Highway nine. Uh, Stanley Dribbles' house number is one one nine four six US two seventy four road. Same house number. But if you have an Apple device, an Apple phone, an Apple, an iPad, and you look on the maps, the digital map says that K nine highway starts at Bunge Elevator and follows the gravel road out to the intersection that's south of my house and then goes on west to Effingham and out where Jackson County. Um, so sometimes when workers, medical workers come looking for my place, they end up at Stan Dribbles. Because Apple says he lives at one one nine four six Highway nine. Uh, and they say that I live at one one nine four six Jewel Road. Well, that's pretty logical. The intersection north of me at US seventy three, there's a county street sign that names the streets. It says US seventy three and Jewel Road. No mention of Highway nine. You go a mile south to where the paved road makes a right angle turn, there's another highway, another street sign says US two seventy four and Jewel Road. No mention of Highway nine. So if you come through with a Google truck taking pictures of the roads, I live on Jewel Road. Now that's very logical. I've lived in three other states. I've lived in four other countries. And wherever there was a state highway name, there was always a local name for the street. For three years, I lived a block away from the Appian Way. It happens to be Italian Highway seven, but they always called it the Appian Way, not Highway seven. Um, I live on Jewel Road and I really think we got work yet to do on our GPS system here in the county. In fact, I have a five-page paper written on that that I'd be happy to share with you at some point in time, but there's work to be done.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Being none. Um, approval of the minutes. Did you have a chance to read the minutes from October third?
Yes, I'll make them up into approve.
Okay, and I will second that. It's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Commissioner comments?
I have none.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to the Safety Committee and HR for putting on a wonderful, um, training day yesterday for all of our staff. Um, I learned several things. I think our presenters were great. Um, and just, I appreciate all your efforts because I know planning a, an entire day um, for everyone to get something out of it. I heard, um, talk this morning in the courthouse of just how great yesterday was. So just wanted to say thank you to everybody that, um, that put forth the efforts of planning that. So, um, new business, um, Brian Oswald, I'm going to add you in here um, before our solid waste management agreement. So if you want to come up.
I just, uh, real quickly, we'll update you a little bit on the elevator. Uh, MEI is in the process of whatever company builds the actual board that's going into the elevator. It's being built. Uh, how quick that can be built, they're saying December. So, uh, last week of December, they're thinking that they're putting it in. So, uh, if it gets done any sooner than that, I'm sure they'll come to, uh, be here as soon as they can get it. That's really all, you know, I can say on the elevator other than it's, it is what it is now.
I don't know how much. I know, I know nothing about elevators. Could there be like a manual switch put in there where they could just, if you had someone that was in the elevator operated?
Running, whatever, whatever part of that board got hit with lightning has got all the controllers down on it. So I don't think you could even manually switch it because the relays going to the top and bottom are both going in that elevator. So it took a lot of damage to it with the, what happened to it, so.
Right. I didn't know if there was any way, do you think that elevator company could?
I could ask them. I could ask them. I don't know what the safety.
Because you know, we've got the issues that have come up with court. And I was just thinking if there was some way we could have a manual switch and that they would have to come get someone and, uh, you know, for maintenance and they could actually put them in the elevator and, and take them up.
And I know we don't necessarily have to, we should follow OSHA rules, but I know by county, we're not under the, we're not under them, but any business would be. So I think that would probably where they'd shut you down and say, no, we're not going to do that. But I'll ask.
Where's MEI out of?
Uh, Kansas City.
Okay, and they're building the board?
Uh, some company is. I don't know that it's even in the United States where they build the board, but it's kind of the same process as what we're doing over at the jail. They're building that tower board right now. So, uh, once they get that built, then they can install it. So the installers aren't the problem. It's the, it's the product that we're trying to get that is the problem.
Do we have a backup plan of any options to get people up safely or chairlifts or have we looked in?
We have looked into backup plans as far as chairlifts, uh, the cost of that and the timing of that will not help us any. So if, even if we spent the somewhere around eighty to ninety thousand dollars to get the chairlift in there, uh, we're not going to get it done before the timing of the elevator. So. So I just backed off of that one because, uh, it does, it's no good to uh, look for something that's not gonna, you know, that's gonna come after we get it fixed, so.
That's the reason I was thinking of the manual, if we could actually use the, that, but.
Might be doable. I don't know. Just having it basically an elevator man.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or just use it for that purpose only.
Yeah, it wouldn't be just the public, John Q. Public couldn't just walk in and go. When we had a situation and we knew that they were disabled, a person needed.
That might be doable. Let me, let me check in on that because I've never asked that question, but, uh, we'll get that. And then, uh, that's, that's, I don't know that you want any rundown on everything else that we're doing, but, uh, if you want that now.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should be into the appraiser's office. Of course, uh, the sixteenth, they'll be cutting that hole. So we'll be in there. Uh, probably Thursday and Friday to prep for that. Uh, and then we'll, after we get that, then we'll take care of the other side of that. Uh, furniture was moved upstairs today for the county attorney. So that will be assembled a little bit and we should be able to get pretty close to finishing it. And then, uh, I've got a permit sent off to Kansas Gas for a gas meter for the new generator. So that should save us a lot of money on bringing in a gas line around the whole building. So we'll try that instead and see about that. And break room should be done probably by tomorrow. So we finally, we had to wait to paint it because of the moisture that was in there.
What was that?
The moisture that was coming out of the plaster, it just would not, you know, yeah.
Break room?
It finally got there, so we started painting it. So we'll be done with it. And have it complete and back together. Then we need to talk about probably coming down the hallway. I'll get with Mark and see how much money we have still in my budget for coming down the hallway with carpet where we took on the water that, because that carpet's, uh, needs to come out. And I hate to take it out without being ready to put something else down.
Did we get the drain?
Not yet, but, uh, we'll take that floor up and get it out too. And, uh, that won't take as long as, uh, but once I take up the carpet, we're not going to have any floor covering. So we'd like to do all that at one time.
Sure.
But, uh.
Is the treasure done?
Treasure is done.
Done, and then county attorney will be done this week?
Uh, probably next week, but yeah, we'll get to finish the floor up on the outside and then we need to determine coming down the steps and stuff of what we're going to do up there. But that is our project that, you know, will uh, add to later on.
Now, what were you saying about the generator?
So instead of, uh, bringing the gas line from our gas meter, which is on the north side of our building.
Yep, which is what we approved.
Around the building, through the building and over, we'll run a new gas meter and set it right outside next to the generator and they'll hook right to that meter. Then that meter can also be used for when the jail upgrades their generator. They'll tap that instead of using a diesel generator, they'll run natural gas.
Okay, so when we approved running the new gas line for eight thousand four oh one, that's no longer being done?
Yeah, they'll still run that. I think that's the part of hooking it up. So we'll, uh, we'll see what, uh, comes out of that, but we'll keep an eye on whatever that bid is.
Okay, so we're not running it from the meter? We're putting a new meter in back here?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, which should make a whole lot more sense. Then if we ever want hot water or something, we could tap that meter and use it too for that.
Okay.
And, uh, we, I don't think it's going to be a big deal, but we'll see what Kansas Gas says. They could turn us down. We could still have to do what we gotta do, but. That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next is this, um, agreement with him.
Um, I haven't had a chance to read that.
I haven't either.
Uh, we have a short meeting. Can we, uh, maybe kind of go into recess and maybe do some research on that and come back to that one?
Yeah, that sounds like a great lane by. Yeah, we
Thank you.
Will do that. Um, I don't know if Roger can come early or since they're here, Joe, if you want to go ahead and do your motor grader discussion and department update?
Yeah.
If you're okay.
I'm here with a sales agreement with Caterpillar for a one forty fifteen A all-wheel drive motor grader. And it will be replacing a two thousand fifteen John Deere six seventy two GP, which is in a trade-in. Uh, this is through Sourcewell. So all of the, uh, bidding and everything is done through Sourcewell. The amount is three hundred and fifty eight thousand two hundred dollars. And here to present this to you guys.
That includes a seven-year warranty.
This includes a seven-year warranty and then a full service where they come and they, uh, change all the fluids, filters and check the machine. And then down at the, down at the bottom. You know, and then on the very, put the page over at the top.
Okay.
And then initial the other page down at the bottom.
Okay. That's what trade allows, okay? All right, so I look for a motion to approve the sales agreement from Foley Equipment presented by a Rowan Bridge Superintendent um, for the twenty twenty-three, sorry, I'm looking.
Right down below your thumb. One forty fifteen.
There it is, one forty fifteen AWJ, um, motor grader. Do I have a motion in the amount of three hundred and fifty eight thousand two hundred dollars? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. How's the bleeding going?
Good, they're running again today. We're bleeding. We really, I really wanted a rain, but we're to the point where we have to, we have to. We're filling in some ditches. We've got a couple of those done. Uh, our dirt patcher's been broke down. It's fixed. We'll be getting it tomorrow. Put some more oil in it so we can go hit some more of the, the potholes that are coming up. And, uh, continue to work on, on the gravel roads and we're waiting to hear back from Gabe so we can move forward on our, our fall patching. Then we're mowing, we've mowed probably eighty percent of the gravel roads. So I know it's late, but we're, we're trying. We have a tractor down right now also. So we're down to one mower.
Yeah, but you're continuing on.
Yeah, yes, yes. And, uh, and we've been spraying, he's about done or majority done with the fall spraying. And then we may spray some brush and stuff after that to try to contain, you know, some of it. Yes, that and just any place that's coming up.
Okay.
Because that's been something that's been neglected and we need to address it and try to get our trees trimmed and brushed in.
I'm seeing some spots of Charisio with Spadisa, so I don't know whether, is that something that he's currently spraying for or?
He has been. If you see it, call us and let us know where it's at and we will.
Okay.
We will do what we can. Right now, he's, he's, uh, fall spraying for spring for next year. So, but he sprayed most of that. I thought he had most of that sprayed, all of it sprayed. I'd have to talk to Ben. But, uh, we're working on thistles and some brush along the side of the road. Because I know he'd sprayed for that and he'd sprayed for, uh, Johnson grass has all been done, so. Any other questions?
That I can think of.
I had a bit. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
You ready for me early?
Yes, sir. If you're ready, I'm ready.
Make it work.
Uh, Roger Denton, GIS coordinator is doing a presentation on legal descriptions and surveys.
Um, what I want to do here, and, and I did not do this presentation all for you. Um, what I actually did is I've created this presentation because this is an issue that, uh, is was important to our county. And once we did it, then I've had a lot of people say, what are we doing? What are we doing? How are we getting this done? And so I've agreed to do this presentation for the Kansas Association of Mappers as one of the things that we're doing in a camp conference that, uh, Jack and I will attend on the twenty-fifth, sixth and seventh, I believe is what it is of this month. And so essentially what I'm doing is saying, uh, what, what I want to show you here is what the different kinds of descriptions are, what the different kinds of surveys are and when each are required and how we got into this situation. Okay, so don't, don't hesitate to ask me anytime, uh, I, if you have any questions while this is going on. Basically, I came to the county in two thousand and twelve to help do some ag reappraisal work. What we were doing is we were taking all of the parcel data. We were re-dividing all of the agricultural and farm parcels into, uh, waste and, and grassland and cropland. And just to break it into the individual elements. And the reason that I got hired to do that is I have, uh, graduate work in engineering aerial photo interpretation. Uh, it was easy for me to look at aerial photos and tell what the differences were on different things. I knew how to use GIS work and so I was doing that and we, I was doing it part-time. Uh, Tony Redden was the coordinator, Tony left, and I got to ask if I would be interested in it. Uh, and so I've been here ever since. But one of the things that went on right after that was that, um, I was not accustomed to what the county did in terms of splits and combines and new parcels and how they worked with it. And many of the, the people who are working in the appraisers office were very nice, but they just said, you just have to take this and put it in. And I would get descriptions that I would say, I can't do that because they just don't tell me enough information to know where they are. And so we'd get descriptions like these, and this is not one I got back in the old days. This is one I worked with about three weeks ago. And there's a track. It says it's the track and then it says a three-cornered track of approximately a quarter of an acre lying south and east of a public highway on the southwesterly direction from Oak Mills located in the year nineteen twenty-two. There is no way to locate where that is. I can't do it. Nobody can do it. And you run into these and, and the next chunk that we're looking at has a thing that's then angling northeasterly fifteen rods. Northeasterly is not a direction. It's a general kind of thing. But when we're putting these in, we're trying to put them in so that they can be judged as this person has this many acres and they want to know that they've got the right number of acres that they're being taxed on. If I can't locate where those properties are, it's difficult. Now, I happen to be licensed by the Kansas State Board of Technical Professions and that makes it improper for me to use things that are not legally done. And so what was happening, people were writing their own description. So I went to Pat and I said, Pat, what can we do to try and make things better? And Pat didn't know at the time and he said, help me find some laws. And so what I did is I went to the Kansas State Board of Technical Professions. They helped line me up. They have a couple of kinds of laws that they deal with. One is called a title law and the other is a practice law. It's, the technical professions are engineering, uh, architecture, landscape architecture, geology and surveying. If, in fact, uh, you want to call yourself a surveyor, you have to be licensed by them. Otherwise, it's illegal. And then it also says that if you are a surveyor, here's the practice that you're licensed to do. And under the Practice Act, there is, which is KSA seventy-four seven zero zero one, land surveyors are exclusively granted the right to the preparation of original descriptions. And I wish I knew how to move this. Oh, there we go. Um, uh, land descriptions of real property for the conveyance of rec, of, or recording thereof and the preparation of maps, plats, fields, not recording that presentation. Uh, field not recordings. Uh, I'm reading this terribly. But the idea is that there is a statute that said all new descriptions must be prepared by a land surveyor. Now, that's going to make it a little subject to argument and, and we'll come back to this. There's also KSA nineteen fourteen thirty-four, which says all new descriptions, uh, can be designated uh, either to the register of deeds to be recorded or to someone else that you might determine should take those. It doesn't have to be the register of deeds. If a surveyor, that, the Practice Act says that surveyors are the only ones who can write new descriptions. And their ethics say that if they write a new description, they have to survey it. They have to produce the survey and they have to register that survey with the register of deeds or another agency that you have designated. Okay, it's that simple. However, there's an Attorney General's opinion, which was, uh, ninety-three fifty-seven, which means it was generated in nineteen ninety-three. This is not new stuff. And what it does is it basically says, the Attorney General's opinion says that it, it was actually an attorney requesting the opinion saying land companies and us, we write descriptions and if you restrict this, you're restricting us from doing our job. And he wrote back and said, in my opinion, there are two kinds of descriptions. There are what's called measured descriptions and there are fractional divisions. Okay, fractional descriptions. Measured descriptions are those which involve distance and direction. So for instance, if you're bringing a corner off and you've got a piece of ground that's a hundred and fifty by two hundred feet, that's a fraction. That's a measured division. If you have any lines that say, hey, these are what are necessary to create these tracks, you will notice in the survey, it shows you the track descriptions and it says what they're going to be. Those have to be done. Those are a measured description. A fractional division is something that takes a section of property and then says you can sell the northeast quarter of that section. That's called a fractional division, or they're also defined as alaqua divisions, which means of, of the parts. And so you could have, in this case, you could have, uh, the northeast quarter, you could have the south, or you could have the west half of the southwest quarter. You could have descriptions that don't use dimensions or directions. Okay, now, the northwest quarter of this one happens to have deviated from that half and they wanted it on a fence line. So you see, it did require a measured division that they've used on the right. Additionally, those fractional divisions could say, uh, part of the northeast quarter north of the creek line. And so you see there's a situation where it is a creek or a stream or a river. And you could use that, but the surveyors will tell you what you have to do is you have to say what portion of that creek you're going to measure from. Is it from the center of the creek? Or from the west bank or the north bank or the south bank or the toe of the slope? And you just have to say this is what it is that it's looking for. Now additionally, roads can be used. So if you have a road, you could say that portion of the northeast quarter west of and identify the road. Uh, and so that could be done. And then once land is subdivided such as, uh, the one we see down here, you could say, uh, for instance, lot number twelve and the north half of lot thirteen. But you can't say, if you think lot thirteen is forty-five feet wide, you can't say the north uh, twenty-two and a half feet. Because it may not be forty-five feet wide. Many of these old plats that were done were never surveyed. And when they do go in and survey, they find there's more or less land than they thought there was. And so you have a number of them that have different amounts. The problem comes in if, if you would sell the north twenty-two and a half feet and the south twenty-two and a half feet, you might end up with them overlapping or you might end up with a gap that no one owns. And we have those in a number of places throughout the county where all the pieces have been sold off and there's extra land left. And where does that go? Uh,
When you have a, a stream and it's been surveyed a long time ago, but the stream changes course, what happens there?
Now you're into, into law on, uh,
Accretion and revulsion?
Yes, and, and the reality is when the stream moves, your property. when the stream moves, your property line moves. Uh, the Missouri River, that's why we have uh, had the arguments over the Missouri River and its location, and the state of Kansas had part and Missouri had part. But when that river moved, then it became, like, game of lawsuit.
Well, when it moves by accretion, line moves, it moves by avulsion, by flood, and then it settles back in another one. It doesn't, your boundary line doesn't move. Which was the problem with Missouri because it moved, and so a lot of land that was on the Kansas side was really, was formerly Missouri land, so it took statutes to change that. Um, but yes, it runs into a significant problem. It depends on how long it takes for the boundary line to change.
So our contention is, uh, and the Attorney General's opinion was that fractional divisions anyone can write. Measured divisions must be written by a land surveyor. Now, when we did that, I, I want to say there are three kinds of surveys, three basic kinds. And again, whatever I say, you could argue about because I'm breaking them into terms that I want to understand, understood around here. And basically, I break them into three types of surveys. There's locational or informational surveys. There's what we call platta surveys, and then there are plats. And I want to explain to you the difference between the three right now. Uh, a lot of people survey their property. You might go out, you might have a, uh, you could have surveys done for a piece of property that already exists because descriptions have been written. You could have uh, road surveys that show where things are. But going back to this, the kinds of surveys that are just informational are boundary surveys, property surveys, ALTA surveys. Uh, ALTA is American Land Title Association, uh, improvement surveys, ILCs. ILCs are improvement location certificates. Uh, in many states, you can't get a loan on a piece of property until you have an ILC done. Because that shows where your property is in respect to the property lines. Because how often do we run into a house or barn or garage or something here in Ashland County uh, that isn't within the property boundaries? And we do. Um, you have topo surveys, drainage surveys, flood planes, elevation certificates, construction surveys. You can have all kinds of informational surveys. Platta surveys are a specific type where they're writing a new description. So if they're going, if, if you're a landowner and you go get a surveyor and the surveyor is going to uh, create you or break off a chunk of property which so you can sell it to someone else, then they create a new description. When they create the new description, they must survey it. They have to create what they would call a platt of survey. And they have to file that with the register of deeds or whoever the county has designated. All right? It requires county surveyor's approval that it meets the minimum standards. Uh, it has to have the new property descriptions either in the mapping form. And, and I will show you, it would have uh, new descriptions of the properties. Um, it would additionally need, uh, it would create the parcels and it would have to show any easements that are there. Now, what it doesn't do is it doesn't transfer any property. All it does is create the descriptions. So once this is recorded, often people think, oh, this is already done. A great example of that is this survey. This was a platt of survey created by uh, the city of Ashland for uh, the parcel of property that, that was used by the school. Up north, yeah, which was originally Burt Nash. They went in and located all of these easements that they needed because there's a water tower on there, there are water lines in there, there are sewer lines in there. It created all of those easements, right? But it just creates the description for them. This itself does not convey anything, acknowledge anything. And if you will notice, platta surveys don't contain the owner's name or signatures at all. It may have who they prepared the survey for, but it's not necessarily for the owner. And so in these cases, the owners, the courts have ruled that sure, they create these descriptions, but the owner doesn't necessarily acknowledge that these new parcels or boundaries are created. So in this case, they had the survey performed, they registered the survey, but they never wrote the easements that went to it and executed them, so those were not sufficiently done. Now, on the other hand, a plat a plat is the third kind I'm talking about. Plats do require that the parcels be shown, that the descriptions be established, that they be they be granted lot and block numbers. And then they have to be, uh, the owner has to show clear ownership title. And they have to sign the plat saying that they are approving of this division of property and that any dedication is not previously dedicated will be so dedicated to public use. And because there may be dedications, then also what there have to be is an approval of the jurisdiction within which they reside. So for instance, this is Briarwood's plat. And right in this plat, one of the, uh, one of the comments down there says, this road is not a public road until the people bring it up to a standard that's acceptable to the county. It shows where the easements are. These actually become good. Doesn't require another deed to transfer anything. When this is received by the appraiser's office, they are free to go ahead and break this up into individual parcels. The new description, because it's a plat and it's accepted by the governing body and registered with the register of deeds, then the new descriptions of these properties become the lot number, the block number, and the plat upon which they exist. So for instance, here's a Brookdale plat. This shows you a dedication statement over here on the side that says, the streets and other public right-of-ways on this plat and not here to forward, dedicated for public use, and goes on to say, they are now dedicated by the governing bodies signing off on these. Those become legitimate right-of-ways, easements, and parcels of property. A lot here. Uh, if I were to say, let's say this lot right up here, uh, that would be, uh, if I, I don't know if I can read it carefully enough because it's fairly small, but it maybe lot twenty-four, block four, Brookdale Estates, plat eight. That is a legal description of that property. You no longer need or want a meets and bounds description on that. You should use these descriptions. You get into trouble using other descriptions. For instance, the industrial park was platted, and they go back and use those previous meets and balances descriptions, and the next thing you know is they're making errors on. They should be by lot, block, and subdivision descriptions. Now, by doing these, go ahead.
Sorry, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Will you go back to, from the, so parcel for the plat of survey, sorry, that, the example of the easements of the, that one?
This one.
That one's different. They're both called plat of survey.
No.
This one's plat.
This is called platta survey.
The next one is.
What? This is a plat.
Okay, because
A plat is different than a plat of survey.
Well, and I think, I'm just thinking for constituents, because many people have hired surveyors and then platta surveys, and then ten years later, they're like, I wonder why it was never recorded? Because it was platta survey versus a plat. So you don't have to split out, you could do the same thing of the platta survey in a plat, correct? There's no, like, you don't have to be splitting out parcels to do a platta survey. If you have a piece of ground and you just want the easements for drives or for water towers or whatever, the easements. That was the platta survey example, but it was never, it never hit the register of deeds because you never recorded it. So like, you hire the surveyor, you get it, you might have it in your house, and then ten years later, you're like, I know I did a survey on that. Why don't they have record at the county? So I'm just trying to understand.
So, so, so I'm going to tell you, platta survey and plat are distinctly different. The platta survey creates the descriptions, the plat creates the parcels. Now, the, the, the big difference is, and you would say, well, they come in and say, well, that never got recorded.
Yeah.
The thing is, if you don't require people to do things, pretty soon they won't be doing them. To file with the register of deeds, it costs fifty bucks. That fifty dollars goes to the county surveyor for reviewing the plat and making sure that it meets minimum qualifications. If we charge that, many of the survey said, if you want this thing recorded, it's going to cost you an extra fifty bucks. And they would go, no, I don't want it. I don't want to pay the extra fifty bucks. So they just wouldn't record it. The reality is, all it took to fix that is to say we are on a new path of action. So to speak, you can say, well, the rules are being reestablished. All surveys, all platt of surveys must be recorded. We're going to hold your feet to the fire and say, get those recorded. And, and they will do it very simply because here's the thing, if they do not file, if they do not follow their professional ethics, all it takes is a phone call to the Kansas State Board of Technical Professions. They'll jump right in line. Because once they're under investigation, they are in trouble. Okay? So they will, they will jump right in line, they will get those things done. They needed to be filed.
Okay, that was, I, from, from
They just weren't being done.
Standpoint, they should have filed.
Like, like everything else.
By their, for their constituents. If I'm a surveyor and you hired me to go out on your your pasture land and do an easement, that's all you wanted. You don't need to parcel out or anything. You just want the platta survey and, and create an easement for whoever. The, in, the surveyor should still record it on the purchaser's behalf.
Easements are slightly different. Okay? If you're actually doing a parcel for sale, then, then that's one thing. But where you're doing easements, uh, they don't require that every easement have a platta survey prepared and filed for those easements.
Okay.
So you may end up with easements that they have not been filed on.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's what I've seen of. And, you know, people didn't realize at the time, but now they wish they would have had it, so there was record, and I was just curious how that.
But what you do need, even with a platta survey, it doesn't do anything unless you file another document. So if you have an easement in the platta survey, and we go back to this one, that the guy comes in and files this, and it shows here that there is one, two, three, four, five, uh, six different, you know, it, it's actually creating sorry, I can't, uh, manage this mouse. See where it's creating two parcels of property right here? Even though you register this, if you don't file a deed for those two pieces of property, transferring it to someone or something, then they don't exist. They still remain with the original owner. All right? They do not, it, a-again, I will go back and say the platta survey creates new descriptions. The plat creates new parcels. And, and once you create the new parcels, like with the Brookdale plat, once we go in and create that, the next day, we can break that down into that many pieces. And those each become a separate parcel of property. They're owned by the same individual, but each one gets its own deed. Okay? Each of those is a newly named description. All right?
Okay.
Now, what the county did back in two thousand and thirteen is we passed a resolution, and the important part of this resolution is, it says, be therefore resolved, the county, Board of County Commissions, Ashland, Kansas, appraiser shall not process any original land description by a measured description unless the same is supported by a survey filed in the office with, uh, in the office and with the Ashland County reg, register of deeds. All right? You passed, not you, but the county commission passed that. We had a type of I'm sorry, but it's still good. And, and then it says that any such instrument which is not so supported uh, may be uh, returned to the parties for correction before processing. And, and we do that. And it also says that, uh, further resolved that the Ashland County Surveyor may be consulted on any question pertaining to the original land surveys and will assist with the process of bringing the parties into conformance, and the cost of the services of the county surveyor may be assessed against the parties. Three simple things. Because our county surveyor works in a, uh, contract basis, and her only pay is the cost of reviewing those plats or plats of survey. Okay?
And when we do easements, like when we have to replace a bridge or, or something like that, and we need an easement, um, the county surveyor handles that at platta survey? And then do we record those?
We do.
Okay. I was just curious.
We do, uh, and, and, and we were very bad on it, but we've gotten much better at it, haven't we, Pat?
Well, we're trying, yeah.
And then do the townships do that as well for easements they grant? Then
Townships, I have not seen the townships gathering. If they don't come to report it, we don't ever see it.
Yeah, since we're responsible for the bigger bridges and all of the bridges and the bigger culverts, I don't know how often they run across the need for reconstruction easement.
Okay.
And, and as I have said, easements don't require all of the same information, but what we do now is we scan those in, and as a matter of fact, I will tell you, within our own department, when people come in and they have an old survey, we'll scan it in, make it not in the register of deeds, the register of deeds cannot take it because the surveyor may not even be alive anymore. But we can still scan those and put those into our miscellaneous files, so they are uh, not any more official than they would have been, but we do have a record of them and they can be found in the future. And we will go ahead and do that because electronically, we're saving them.
Okay, if someone has a like, they're going to create a Durham subdivision.
Right.
And they submit the plat. Who owns the streets, the ground under the streets? I mean, you created the parcels for the home that they're selling off. But where the streets are, are they still under the original person's name? And can they sell the street off?
And, and the answer to that is, first of all, we have an excellent example of that, that I'm going to show you right here. This is Elm, Elmview subdivision. This is Frank Reeves, who was the county surveyor. He surveyed off four lots that you see uh, right here. See those four lots? And he just called this a street. Now, you will see, the surveyor signed this, but there's no public agency, nor did the owner sign it. No one signed it. So those four lots were created. The descriptions are right there for the four lots. And those four people bought those lots. Those are the people who came in and who owned it? Well, this is a platt of survey. Platt of survey does not create parcels. It only creates descriptions. And since only those four descriptions were created, those four descriptions were created, transferred to those people, they built houses, they used that, just like if it were a road. It was never dedicated to anyone, nor was it accepted by anyone. And as such, it wasn't a road at all. All it was, was a piece of property owned by the original owner that they were using as a driveway.
So if they had submitted it for a plat, then that transfers them, that driveway property is then, I mean, who owns, if, if it's not, does that automatically become a township or county road?
In order to do that, they had to create the plat. And then the plat was brought, uh, was signed by all the owners of the property and brought back to the county commission for acceptance. You required the township to say, yes, they would accept maintenance of it before you approved the plat. Is that a fair statement?
That is absolutely correct. Um, there is a distinction between roads that are located within the corporate limits of a city belong to the city, that they have the fee simplified, it's called to that. that they have the fee simplified, it's called to that. Roads that are located outside of cities are still owned by the public, they're not owned by the Board of County Commissioners. Board of County Commissioners has authority and control over them, uh, but you are not the owner of the land underneath our roads. And I'm not really sure why that distinction is in place, but
Is that the same for the townships? They don't own it either?
They don't own.
They don't own anything. They're in your control. So, what we did after doing all those things is, as you might imagine, there were title people, real estate people, attorneys, uh, we wrote a letter to a whole lot of the other people, we went out, met with them, and talked to them about why this was being done. Uh, and we actually told them that, and, and I know this sounds funny to say, but we said, we're gonna work with you any way that we can. Most of the people were very good about it and said, we understand, because you can't record things that aren't good, and bad land descriptions just continue to haunt us. Uh, we have cleaned up a whole lot, things are getting much better. Uh, but if we don't fix them, they're just gonna be there until, until the next person gets the property. And the problem is, property's going up in value, and so it just gets more expensive to fix these things. Uh,
And the problems don't get better with age, because people forget, I mean, the people who were around when it was done, maybe it's not even intended. If you're talking about something that happened in nineteen seventies, unlikely you're gonna find both of the people that remember.
Now, an awful lot of properties are being sold, either by bid or by offer on a per acre basis, so many, and, and you're looking at one that way right now, and so if you look at something on a per acre basis, and you say, hey, we agree on a price uh, of, let's throw out six thousand dollars an acre, then where do you get the acreage? Do you get it? From the original deed? Well, sometimes it's there and sometimes it's not, and maybe it's accurate, and maybe it's not. Do you get it from a survey? Do you get it from the appraiser's office? Where do you get it? And I'm gonna tell you, we worked one in the last year, where the difference between what they thought it was on their deed and what it was in the county record was, uh, three and a half acres difference. Well, if it sells for ten thousand dollars an acre, that's thirty-five thousand dollars, and now the, the heirs are at war with each other on who has to, who has to pay that thirty-five thousand dollar loss, and whose parcel it's coming out of, and it's just, we don't like being in the middle of those, but we are when we don't have good information. Okay, so, we went around to a lot of people, we talked about it for a long time, and generally, most of them came around. We had a couple of attorneys who did not really wanna go along with this at first, but, but even they have, uh, since then acquiesced and said, okay, we're not gonna do this. And then we have some parcels of property where they're written, they're of record in the register of deeds office, but they've never been processed in the appraiser's office, because they've never been done legitimately. Okay? Any questions? Hope this was informational.
Just love, love to, uh, decipher.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you have, uh, I know. Executive session?
Yeah. Um, we can do that. Pat, do you have any county counselor updates?
I, I do not.
Okay, uh, yeah, if we could do attorney-client uh, with commission, Pat, thirty minutes? Uh, yeah.
How long?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty minutes? I will move that Board of County Commissioners recess to executive session at What time is it?
It's ten fifty-five, sir.
Ten fifty-five AM, thank you, for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes. And those in the commission room, here in the basement of the, uh, courthouse, and those present will be two commissioners, uh, Pat Henderson and, uh, Maintenance Brian.
Alright, I'll second, like, the move to second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes. Alright, outside of reviewing bills and the certain solid wastes, you wanna recess in the workshop so we can have time to review things, and then
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Are we gonna go clear till one, and then come back in and, and do approvals on that, or do you?
Quarter till, twenty till, I don't know, I mean, ten till?
What, a quarter?
It doesn't matter, it's not gonna, it's just, we have, this is thirteen pages to review, and then, and then the bills, but.
Okay, I'll move that we recess, uh, until, uh, twelve forty-five, and then come back in and look at the solid waste, uh,
Contract.
Contract and, uh, finish up.
Okay, I will second that, so it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we will be recessed until one. Okay, we are back in open session. Uh, we had time to review the addendum to Waste Services Contract, uh, made and entered between him Corey Incorporated, um, and Atchison County, amending our Waste Services Contract dated November twenty-first, twenty seventeen, to the terms of the addendum to take effect October first, twenty twenty-three. Um, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I shall move.
Okay, and I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Thank you for working on this, Patrick. There you go. Okay, I also have a purchase order, um, for the treasurer to come out of the treasure reserve fund um, for blinds for her office, um, in the amount of three thousand ninety-four dollars, so I have a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, and I will second, the move and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Approval of the expenses, we had time to review the expenses for this week, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, and I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, passes two to zero.
What?
Yep.
Guess we didn't need fifteen minutes.
Any other public comment?
Pat, I have you, uh, are you gonna be here next week, the seventeenth? See, you're gonna be gone. The trial, okay, just in case. How we set that, I just noticed that Christmas Day is on a Monday, so do we have
No.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday? I just don't remember that.
Do you like, I'm just like, I know that's the answer, I'm looking right up. I'm like, oh. I'm gonna go back and look at the minutes, from the organization.
Thank you. Sometimes I flip forward just to see what's coming up. Notice that.
So it looks I'm gonna make sure I have my reading right before I So on January ninth of this year, this was the organizational meeting, I'm just making sure I'm on the right. The board approved the following holidays, it would be Christmas Eve on Friday, December twenty-second.
Okay.
And then Christmas Day, Monday, December twenty-fifth. So that's what it looks like you approved for us this year. So we get Friday and Monday, so we will be here on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, for an actual meeting.
Alright, thank you. That's what's just amazing, so like, a month ago, seeing Christmas stuff already in the stores, it's like, oh. When you see that before you do pumpkins.
Headline counties offer shorter awards weeks. My convention computer, that wasn't the smartest.
That's what I did at at home, but then I printed out my confirmation sheet, just, I like to have that. So then I went up and asked if some things looked like they could have been just a little bit different, of course, there's different rates and things this year, so. Melissa, help me a little. Yeah, and that's tomorrow's the last day on open enrollments, if anybody's listening.
Say your command. It's one o'clock, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Also move.
Okay, I'll second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.